Important products throughout the country that we desperately need like food and medicine. So to the dedicated truck drivers across the country, we just want to say, thank you.
Good morning and welcome to, welcome to another edition of Truck Talk with Wiley Sanders Truck Line. I am so excited this morning. All do we have a line up this morning. We got Troy Recreation here. We got the TA Petro's here. They're going to talk about great deals for you drivers to get fuel and the things that arrangements that they have made for you. Hey, I got someone from the lead plant here that are trying to get people jobs. It's just going to be a great show this morning. We want you to, get you another cup of coffee and get you a doughnut stick and sit back and enjoy the show this morning. We also have company in here. We've been filmed twice. So y'all excuse me if it look like I'm jumping around. I'm just excited. I got like two camera on me. I don't know, but we're gonna have a good time this morning. We'll be right back with our first couple of guests.
Hey everybody, Mike McDowell, driver of the Loves Trunk Stop Ford Mustang for Front Row Motorsports. Just want to send out a special thanks to all you out there that are working so hard to keep America moving. We know that the world's crazy right now and, and things are trying and, and we know that this is a difficult time, but we're so thankful for you guys that continue to stay on the road and keep us going. We know it's not easy and you have family back home and friends and we just appreciate it so much. There's so much that we take for granted that we realize right now that without those trucks going around the, the country, we wouldn't have any of these supplies. So thank you guys very much. Keep up the good work and we appreciate it.
Come join Wiley Sanders Truck Lines today. Thousand dollar sign on board. We match your 401K up to 4%. Blue Cross Blue Shield. We also have a dinner plan. You could be the next driver of the month. Wiley Sanders Truck Lines, Troy, Alabama. You're a certified mechanic looking for a job, then come to Wiley Sanders Truck Line. That's right. Wiley Sanders Truck Line. We need good mechanics. Call John Smothers or Ken Bray for the maintenance department. You will have a future at Wiley Sanders Truck Line. Wiley Sanders 2020 vision for you is hauling lots of freight. We got it. Safe equipment. We got that. Lots of quality home time and great benefits like matching your 401K up to 4% of your gross pay. Blue Cross Blue Shield, Wiley Sanders Truck Lines. At Wiley Sanders Truck Lines, the only place you'll be stopping is at the bank. Wiley, money, money, money. Wiley Sanders Truck Lines, Troy, Alabama. Come drive for the best today.
We know that times are unprecedented. We know that things are uncertain. We're all worried about getting the supplies our families need, but we know that there's one thing we can depend on right now and always, truck drivers, because we know they will continue to drive, even when they're away from their own families, delivering important products throughout the country that we desperately need like food and medicine. So to the dedicated truck drivers across the country, we just want to say, thank you.
Truck Talk with Wiley Sanders Truck Lines. Tune into our live broadcast Monday mornings from eight thirty to nine thirty on TC2. Do you have a business in our area or thinking of opening a business in our area? If so, let's talk about it on Truck Talk. No charge to you. That's right. No charge to you. No charge to you. Wiley Sanders Truck Lines, Troy, Alabama. Committed to the community. Remember, drive for the best. Wiley Sanders Truck Lines, Troy, Alabama. Wiley Sanders 2020 vision for you is hauling lots of freight. We got it. Safe equipment. We got that. Lots of quality home time and great benefits like matching your 401K up to 4% of your gross pay. Blue Cross Blue Shield, Wiley Sanders Truck Lines. At Wiley Sanders Truck Lines, the only place you'll be stopping is at the bank. Wiley, money, money, money. Wiley Sanders Truck Lines, Troy, Alabama. Come drive for the best today. And we're back with Truck Talk with Wiley Sanders Truck Line. We have Pastor Harrington with us. And you know, we always start off on Mondays with a scripture. Pastor Harrington came and gave us a prayer orientation this morning. Now he's going to give us a scripture. Pastor Harrington, how you doing this morning?
I'm tremendous Jeffrey, and thank you so much for inviting me and having me.
Well, thank you for coming. And let me say this to you, and I know offense to no other pastors that have came, but I love the way in your prayer, how you prayed for the drivers and the trainees. That touched my heart. That touched everybody in safety's heart that you made it a lot about them because that was their first day on the job. And I'm sure every man, woman in there was, heart was touched by your prayer. Thank you so much.
That's our job. That's our job. My boss above wants to connect with everybody that we pray for.
Good job. Well, all right then. Well, let's see what's your scripture. What scripture?
Well, I got a very, a very short one verse of scripture that I do believe the Lord laid on my heart this morning. And it's Philippians chapter three and verse number 10. And it reads like this, "That I may know Him and the power of His resurrection and the fellowship of His sufferings being made conformable unto His death." Now, just the first part of that scripture points out that one of the saddest tragedies in a human life is to come and leave this world and not know who your creator was.
All right.
But conversely, one of the greatest joys, or the greatest joy in life, is to know the one on a first name basis who has made it possible and to know his power, to seek him, to find him, to be blessed and changed through his power. Though Paul, who wrote this to the Philippians, had been walking with Jesus for some time, he knew that there was so much more to know concerning him. So Paul said, "If I can just know Him, I'll count everything else as done and everything will be all right." So much is happening in this world right now. Things are moving so fast, but we should all have the heart that Paul had and the desire to know Him, because to know Him is the prize of life. It's an unseen prize, but it's a fulfilling prize. May the same drive that Paul had be found in each of us. God bless you, man.
Man, I tell you what Pastor Harrington, you have, you have installed a week upon us. If we can just go through this week and look back on the things that, that you have said, it's just going to be so uplifting to us. I want to tell you that Truck Talk format is always open for you. If you're having something at your church and you want me to announce it, just get, get with Greg or get with me. You have my personal number. Now, my number is no secret. It runs everywhere. But I promise you this, if I don't answer, I'm gonna call you back.
Well, I thank you so much.
Before I go to bed every night, I check my phone. I make sure that I've, I've got back with everybody. Well, I promised you I wouldn't hold you long. I told you don't be long and you wasn't long.
No.
Won't you say good morning to your congregation? Cause I know some of them is listening.
Well, I, I didn't even let them know that I'd be on this morning. So if by happenstance they're watching, God bless you all. Be covered and blessed today.
Okay. We thank you. We'll be right back with our next guest on Truck Talk with Wiley Sanders Truck Lines. Come join Wiley Sanders Truck Lines today. Thousand dollar sign on board. We match your 401K up to 4%. Blue Cross Blue Shield. We also have a dinner plan. You could be the next driver of the month. Wiley Sanders Truck Lines, Troy, Alabama. You're a certified mechanic looking for a job, then come to Wiley Sanders Truck Line. That's right. Wiley Sanders Truck Line. We need good mechanics. Call John Smothers or Ken Bray for the maintenance department. You will have a future at Wiley Sanders Truck Line.
Hey everybody, Mike McDowell, driver of the Loves Trunk Stop Ford Mustang for Front Row Motorsports. Just want to send out a special thanks to all you out there that are working so hard to keep America moving. We know that the world's crazy right now and, and things are trying and, and we know that this is a difficult time, but we're so thankful for you guys that continue to stay on the road and keep us going. We know it's not easy and you have family back home and friends and we just appreciate it so much. There's so much that we take for granted that we realize right now that without those trucks going around the, the country, we wouldn't have any of these supplies. So thank you guys very much. Keep up the good work and we appreciate it.
Come join Wiley Sanders Truck Lines today. Thousand dollar sign on board. We match your 401K up to 4%. Blue Cross Blue Shield. We also have a dinner plan. You could be the next driver of the month. Wiley Sanders Truck Lines, Troy, Alabama. You're a certified mechanic looking for a job, then come to Wiley Sanders Truck Line. That's right. Wiley Sanders Truck Line. We need good mechanics. Call John Smothers or Ken Bray for the maintenance department. You will have a future at Wiley Sanders Truck Line. Wiley Sanders 2020 vision for you is hauling lots of freight. We got it. Safe equipment. We got that. Lots of quality home time and great benefits like matching your 401K up to 4% of your gross pay. Blue Cross Blue Shield, Wiley Sanders Truck Lines. At Wiley Sanders Truck Lines, the only place you'll be stopping is at the bank. Wiley, money, money, money. Wiley Sanders Truck Lines, Troy, Alabama. Come drive for the best today.
We know that times are unprecedented. We know that things are uncertain. We're all worried about getting the supplies our families need, but we know that there's one thing we can depend on right now and always, truck drivers, because we know they will continue to drive, even when they're away from their own families, delivering important products throughout the country that we desperately need like food and medicine. So to the dedicated truck drivers across the country, we just want to say, thank you.
Truck Talk with Wiley Sanders Truck Lines. Tune into our live broadcast Monday mornings from eight thirty to nine thirty on TC2. Do you have a business in our area or thinking of opening a business in our area? If so, let's talk about it on Truck Talk. No charge to you. That's right. No charge to you. No charge to you. Wiley Sanders Truck Lines, Troy, Alabama. Committed to the community. Remember, drive for the best. Wiley Sanders Truck Lines, Troy, Alabama. And we're back with Truck Talk with Wiley Sanders Truck Line. We got Dan and Kathy here. Kathy is from the lead plant. And you're just like the truck lines. You've got great opportunities for jobs. And, and Dan, you're with the Troy Recreation.
Yes, sir.
I want you to know that my boss lady came to me. Well, I came to her person. I said, hey, it's time for me and you to do something because I know she likes to do benefit things. And I, I have to say the Lord must have placed on her heart. She said, let's do something for the Miracle League.
Oh, yes.
Do something for them.
Yes, sir.
And they got me in contact with you. And unfortunately I had surgery and we had to postpone the date, but we're coming.
Outstanding.
And we want you to know that all the proceeds are going to you.
That's tremendous. Yes, sir. We appreciate that.
And if you would, just tell me some things about the Miracle League because I'm, it's all new to me.
Well, thank you, Mr. Bennett. This is the 10th year that the Miracle League field has been in existence out at the Troy Sportsplex. A Miracle League field has a rubberized safety surface that allow children with special needs to be able to participate and play the game of baseball. One of the unofficial mottos of the Miracle League, which is a national organization, is that every child deserves the opportunity to play baseball.
That's correct.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And the Miracle League gives children of Troy and Pike County, and we have children from outside of Pike County, from, from Crenshaw County and, and Dale County that participate in our Miracle League. And it is again, not only children with special needs, but we, we say that it's ages five to 99, any, any child or adult that wants to participate. They play baseball and, and we have games out at the Troy Sportsplex. Our season begins not this week, but next week on Thursday night. And we're excited about it and so glad that we're back in action. Last year, of course, we took the, we, we took the year off for safety precautions with COVID. We're back again. And I cannot say enough about the people behind the scenes that do so much work for the Miracle League. Ms. Sheila Compton Sanders and Dr. David Runyon are two individuals that have been instrumental since the very beginning of the Miracle League. And Lucy Fay is another young lady, a college student with an organization called Truly Chosen that partners with the Miracle League to provide extracurricular activities other than the baseball games. They have special events once a month. And Mr. Bennett, we cannot thank you enough for what Sanders Trucking and the Sanders Companies are doing to support the Miracle League and its children.
Well, I, I dare not try to take all the credit. I want no credit because I want to just have fun. And, and Mrs. Sanders, Mrs. Kelly Sanders, I see now why she picked the Miracle League. The older I get, the older I get, the more I learn to listen.
Yes, absolutely.
I learned to listen. You know, we got two years for a reason.
Yes, sir.
And when she said that, I was just all aboard. But then as I learned and found out, I was like, oh my God, I'm glad I'm a part of this. I just want to be part of it. Now, I want you to tell me on TV here.
Yes, sir.
It's gonna be Jeffrey Bennett, which is me, Kevin Baker and Frankie Serres.
Okay.
We're competing against Kelly Sanders, Crystal Kittens, and also Amanda. It works for you.
Okay, okay.
She teaches spin class. I think that's her name. Boy, I pray that's her.
Amanda Mentor.
That's her name. Okay. Don't people get on me when I get her name wrong. But they're gonna, we're gonna ride a spin bicycle. We're gonna bring two up here and we're gonna put them on stage.
Okay.
And we're gonna start at nine with the show.
All right.
We're gonna ride that whole hour.
So Amanda is on the, one of the other teams, is that right?
She's on the team with Kelly Sanders. What are you trying to say? What are you trying to say?
All I want to say is I wish y'all men luck. That's all I got to say.
Come on, man.
Amanda is...
You know, you see Destin back there. That's what I love about lying to you. He back there, girl, girl, girl.
Amanda is incredible. She is one of our instructors and she shows no mercy on our students.
Let me say this. I'm gonna tell you something. I got bad knees and I can't really stand up on the spin bike.
Yes, sir.
She hollered back there at me one day, "If you're not gonna stand up, speed up."
And I say all of that jokingly, of course. We're so thankful to have Amanda as one of our instructors for Spin Bike. And she, obviously a lot of our customers are first time spin bike customers. And she paces everybody according to their needs and such. And we are so appreciative of what all of y'all are doing. And we know it's all in good fun, but it's also for a great cause.
It's for a great cause. And what I like about it, nothing we raise goes to nobody but you.
Well, thank you.
And we buy hamburgers on us. If we buy water, getting them bicycles pulled up here, it's on us. Everything collected and I, I'm not gonna tell how much I got, but I'm, we stepping on out there.
Well, Mr. Bennett.
But I got some people that, I know Ms. Kelly Sanders is the boss, but y'all come on. I'm your boss. Your boss. I want to win. I just, I just want to win. I, I probably can't win on collecting the money because she knows so many people, but I got to win. So I want to win the bicycles.
Yes, sir.
And I go to Amanda's class and you know, I, I keep it hyped. I tell her, I say, I'm gonna beat you. You're gonna train me to beat you.
Yes, sir.
And back to that, back to your reg department you got out there. Let me say this to you. You do a great job. It's clean. The people, your staff is nice. I'm never, and I say never, had a bad experience.
Well, thank you, Mr. Bennett. We have a, as you said, a wonderful, incredible staff that takes such great pride in the facility and their jobs day to day. It's a new challenge. Every day that we get up, we've got to do it all over again.
Yeah.
And they do such a wonderful job. And Amanda is part of our team in, in making sure that the customers have a positive experience and that they want to come back again. And we have many instructors that are so positive and just valuable resources. And we're so thankful of the mayor and the city council and, and the community for the support of Troy Parks and Recreation. We could not do it without them.
You know, when, when you say the mayor, when I think of Pike County, I think how blessed we are.
Oh, yes. Yes, sir.
We, we hit it twice.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Lonsford was good.
Yes, sir.
Jason is, is so active and so, I have never called him and needed him to come and appear somewhere and he not come. And, and that's just, you know, when you live in a town like this and you can call your mayor and tell him your issues, and I'm not the only one that calls him, but he's involved and he's a mayor.
And his...
That's what a mayor does. And I was sheriff, Russell Thomas, the same way. They, those guys come out and eat with us. And, and people, I want to say this from my heart, support your local officers. Support police officers. People make mistakes. But if I put a bad apple in a box, yeah, it may spread to some level. Let's just get the bad apples out, but let's don't get rid of the box.
Yes, there you go. Yes, sir.
We got to keep the apples. If something happens in here right now, the first thing I'm gonna holler, call the law.
Yes, sir.
So we got to realize that these guys, you know, my son is a, is a deputy and, and I wear my little band and, and I, I pray for him every day. This country has got to have police officers and we can't turn our backs on cause one or two make a mistake. You being a supervisor, me being a supervisor, every now and then, you have to let somebody go because they're just not quite fitting in your program.
Yes, sir.
And I got a pretty young lady over there from the lead plant. I was telling her that the other day.
Yes, sir.
You know, I give her an idea that was gave to me from upstairs. She's in a recycling business.
Yes, sir.
And I told her, I said, if you just have somebody to walk to a car and it go yum, 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 that person needs a new battery, correct?
Yes.
But that new battery in turns starts that person in a recycle position. Coming to Troy soon is gonna be batteries for cash, where you can bring your battery, your old battery and sell it. We'll give you cash right then. Batteries for cash is coming. I didn't tell you that. I know she looking. He didn't say that in our meeting. I didn't want you to know that.
Yeah.
But when you start to recycle, that's when our sister companies come in.
Right. Yes, sir.
Let me walk you through. This battery is dead. It won't crank. So it winds up in Troy, Alabama. We take this top off. We take the lead out and we recycle it. People think we make lead. We don't make lead. We recycle lead. Every time we recycle lead, do you know what we do? We preserve the earth. Why do we preserve the earth? Because you have to dig into the earth to get lead. So recycle is the way. We help the environment. And a lot of people say, I didn't know that. I didn't either. We learn as we go.
Absolutely.
Remember them too. Use them, use them. But it just don't stop there. Then we take the plastic and you wind up with this. The liquid that was in it, we recycle it into fertilizer. Our sister companies, we can say helps America. And we can say it with confidence. I can stand here and say this on TV. I'm sitting there. I forgot I was sitting. You know, we got two cameras in the day. I know she's been waiting on me to do this and I was gonna do it. They're doing what they call a behind the scenes. What I can't understand is why they recording us live if it's behind the scenes? But thank you for the job you do. Destin doesn't know this yet, but we, we're coming to one of them games and I'm gonna do Truck Talk right at one of them games. I want to sit there and be a part of that. And that morning, that Monday morning when we recorded, we just gonna play different clips of it.
Yes, sir.
We'll get you to come over and, and let's get some of them kids.
Absolutely, yes.
I'm not scared of this COVID. I mean, we, 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 we babied around a long time. The man upstairs gonna take care of us. And, and we're gonna get some of them kids that probably never been on TV. And we're gonna have them say their names. And I'm gonna root with them. And you know, we gonna, we gonna make it about them.
Absolutely. That's a great idea.
They never put the camera on me. Put it on those kids. And let me just say hello to them and let them say, I enjoy Truck Talk, Wiley Sanders. I'm gonna bribe a couple of them. The city gonna be on my side, you know? My team is weak. Yeah, I ain't got no lot of people. My team is strong. Wait a minute. My team, all my guys are good. My team is strong, but they getting more money on the other side. They getting a lot more money.
I know y'all will finish strong. Y'all will finish strong. Mr. Bennett, I, I cannot say thank you enough to Sanders Trucking, Sanders Lead and KNW. All three of those entities have been such tremendous supporters of the youth in our community, Troy Parks and Recreation, and the community as a whole. And those three companies, I just want to say thank you for what they do.
You know, they do that hardly. Mr. Kenny Campbell, he's, he's, he's one of our leaders out there, our owner, and he has always had an open hand. My granddaddy taught me something when I was at a young age. I had some cookies. My sister wanted some, so I crumbled them up and put them in my mouth so she wouldn't get one. And he turned around, he said, boy, ball your fish up. And back then, this was a lot of money. He took a five dollar bill and I had my fish balled up. He said, if I can get it in there, you can have it. And I opened my hand. He took it back. He said, no, I want you to keep your hand closed. The smaller the straw, if you open your hand, things will come to you. These companies have been blessed so because they give back. They give back to the community all the time. And I'm not gonna get up here and go on and on, but people in the community know.
Absolutely.
It's been sick people. It's been health. It's been people. A lot of things they do, and there won't no recognition for it. I could get in trouble if I keep talking about it. They just want to do it and it'd be done.
Yes, sir.
But this Miracle League, it's, it's just something a little special about it. I admire a kid that's, that's born that can't walk, but still wants to play ball and still struggle. That takes something. That takes something. I've, I've had a lot of leg and feet injuries. And a lot of times I wanted to just give up, seeing people like that and knowing this is a short time for me and it's forever for them.
Yes, sir.
I got my butt up and came to work.
Absolutely. Right.
I got up and came to work. And I want you to know that anytime that you want to come to Truck Talk and, and say something, be glad to do it or any event that you have. And this is an open floor mat for you. We don't have no, no people that, that sponsor us. We're sponsored by Wiley Sanders Truck Lines.
Yes, sir.
So we can announce whatever we want to announce. And we'll announce anything as long as it's positive.
Absolutely.
That was the goal when we got into this. We're doing nothing negative. It's gonna be all positive or we're not gonna touch it.
Well, thank you, Mr. Bennett.
And you think if everybody took the positive road, it's two roads.
Right.
Positive leads to great things. Negative leads to a downhill spiral.
That is so true. So true.
That's it. It is. It's just two roads. You can take either one. I'm gonna stay on the positive side. I like the end of the, look at the beautiful day. Me and you was talking about it. It's just so pretty today. And I woke up and I had a job and, and I was alive. And you know, I got excited about it. Thought about you guys. Thought about the lead plant was coming. I knew she was gonna be scared to death. And I thought about how I was gonna be looking at her. See, I keep looking at her like this. It's like, okay, is he coming to me? Okay, is he finna say something? But no, thank you. And you were so warm to me when I come out there to meet you to kind of get a floor mat. It's going down. The young folks say it's going down. We gonna do it. I've got to get with Kelly today and we gonna set another date. We gonna do it. We gonna do it. And I am coming to one of those games and me and Destin is gonna record. So tell the kids about it and get them excited. So y'all gonna be on TV. And we're gonna come out there and do it. It ain't gonna cost them nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. We appreciate it.
We'll bring some cokes or something. We'll bring them a little snack. We ain't just coming in to handle. My granddaddy used to say, when you come, bring something, boy. Boy, bring me something. And you could bring him a piece of peppermint. He'd be so excited. He'd sit there and pat it in his hand. He'd just always, and if you come in that door, he'd say, what you bringing me? So I, I learned that it wasn't what it was. It was just a thought of it. I used to just...
That's true.
He liked peppermint. I'll bring him some peppermint. So thank you. And you better say hi to your staff and don't get in trouble.
Thank you to our staff and everything that y'all do for our community. We appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Bennett, so much for y'all's support.
And we'll be right back with Truck Talk with Wiley Sanders Truck Line. Come join Wiley Sanders Truck Lines today. Thousand dollar sign on board. We match your 401K up to 4%. Blue Cross Blue Shield. We also have a dinner plan. You could be the next driver of the month. Wiley Sanders Truck Lines, Troy, Alabama. You're a certified mechanic looking for a job, then come to Wiley Sanders Truck Line. That's right. Wiley Sanders Truck Line. We need good mechanics. Call John Smothers or Ken Bray for the maintenance department. You will have a future at Wiley Sanders Truck Line.
Hey everybody, Mike McDowell, driver of the Loves Trunk Stop Ford Mustang for Front Row Motorsports. Just want to send out a special thanks to all you out there that are working so hard to keep America moving. We know that the world's crazy right now and, and things are trying and, and we know that this is a difficult time, but we're so thankful for you guys that continue to stay on the road and keep us going. We know it's not easy and you have family back home and friends and we just appreciate it so much. There's so much that we take for granted that we realize right now that without those trucks going around the, the country, we wouldn't have any of these supplies. So thank you guys very much. Keep up the good work and we appreciate it.
Come join Wiley Sanders Truck Lines today. Thousand dollar sign on board. We match your 401K up to 4%. Blue Cross Blue Shield. We also have a dinner plan. You could be the next driver of the month. Wiley Sanders Truck Lines, Troy, Alabama. You're a certified mechanic looking for a job, then come to Wiley Sanders Truck Line. That's right. Wiley Sanders Truck Line. We need good mechanics. Call John Smothers or Ken Bray for the maintenance department. You will have a future at Wiley Sanders Truck Line. Wiley Sanders 2020 vision for you is hauling lots of freight. We got it. Safe equipment. We got that. Lots of quality home time and great benefits like matching your 401K up to 4% of your gross pay. Blue Cross Blue Shield. Blue Cross, Blue Shield, Wiley Sanders Truck Lines. At Wiley Sanders Truck Lines, the only place you'll be stopping is at the bank. Wiley, some money, money, money. Wiley Sanders Truck Lines, Troy, Alabama. Come drive for the best today. Truck Talk with Wiley Sanders Truck Lines. Tune in to our live broadcast Monday mornings from eight thirty to nine thirty on TC Two. Do you have a business in our area or thinking of opening a business in our area? If so, let's talk about it on Truck Talk. No charge to you. That's right. No charge to you. No charge to you. Wiley Sanders Truck Lines, Troy, Alabama. Committed to the community. Remember, drive for the best. Wiley Sanders Truck Lines, Troy, Alabama. We're back with Truck Talk with Wiley Sanders Truck Line. I was trying to look in my email. See that what live TV gets you? Tell them your name. I'm so.
My name's Mark Fleming. I'm with Travel Centers of America. So nice to be with you, Jeff.
Nice to have you here. You know, me and you talked a couple of weeks ago and we was talking about you was coming down and I didn't know we'd be fortunate enough. To have one of the lead plant workers here, Miss Kathy. Miss Kathy is here and just to show you how we're growing, during the break, me and I was talking, how many positions did you tell me you had open?
We have over thirty positions open and it may have increased over the weekend. I haven't been into the office yet, but I will find out when I get there.
And if somebody wanted one of those positions at lead plant, what would they do? What would be the first process?
The first process would be to come by the human resources office, which is located at nine seventy-two South, um, Three Knot Street, Troy, Alabama. And fill out an application and at that point you'll be interviewed.
Okay. What about a person like me that don't know how to do a lot of things? Say if you wanted to come in and you, could you train? Could you be trained for certain positions?
For all of the general labels, we do train you for everything that you need to know. Um, for the skilled positions, we, we require that you have a certification and that you, um, authorized to do whatever job.
Okay, let me ask you this. What, uh, skill labels do you need?
The skill labels we're needing right now are electricians and industrial maintenance people.
Okay. See what we got going on down here in Troy? You travel all over the United States for TA and Petro?
Yes, sir. Pretty much. All over California, we have three hundred and eighteen full service facilities and standalone restaurants throughout the United States.
Now, I know you wonder why I had you and Miss Kathy up here at the same time because it intertwines. We recycle the lead, then we put it on our trucks. We can only put. Somebody gonna call my hand on this one. Thinking two hundred gallons. I think I would think so a hundred gallons.
Right.
After that hundred gallons, guess what? We need a good truck stop.
Absolutely, absolutely. We hope that, uh, you'll utilize TA Petro. Absolutely.
And you guys have showers and good booze?
Yeah, a little history. Uh, we've been around for fifty years. Uh, we are public, we, actually, we were started publicly. Publicly traded in two thousand and seven. Uh, the average TA Petro sits on twenty-five acres of land. Uh, it has ten, average TA has ten fueling lanes and ten gas lanes. They have. A, a full service restaurant, full and quick service restaurants. They have a big convenience stores. Uh, truck service maintenance facilities and also showers, uh, fitness centers.
Oh, wow.
Uh, business centers, um, laundry facilities. So we try to make it for the driver, uh, uh. A home away from home. Cause you can't, you know, the trucks, they gotta go somewhere and, and our motto at TA Petro. Is we try to return the driver to the highway better than he come in to see us. So that's on our signature box with our new CEO. So. Uh, and, and once again, Wiley Sanders is a partner with TA Petro and we appreciate our partnership. So you have specific things set up with us, uh, strictly with TA Petro.
What are some of your loyalty programs you have?
We have a, uh, it's called, uh, Ultra One and it's based on prior months' gallons. So for instance, you can get from one to five points based on a tier of gallons. I, I mean, all the fleets know that. And then the drivers can use those points for purchases for meals. Uh, purchases for showers, purchases in the retail store. And also for every sixty gallon fill-up, you know, sixty gallons minimum, they also get a free shower. But also in these tiers, once they hit a certain tier, they don't even have to use the sixty gallons. It's part of, you know, they've reached a tier in their fuel gallon. So we hope they get to that, you know, that means they're stopping at our facility. So then they get a free shower as well. So it's a pretty lucrative program. We try to tailor things toward the drivers. Uh, without them, I don't have a job and, and, and I'll say. During this pandemic and everything that was going on, uh, who never stopped? The drivers.
The drivers.
The drivers.
Oh, I like you.
You know, that, that, they're on the road and without them, you know, all the people shutting down. I mean, we had to follow guidelines within the industry. Like some states, oh, you gotta close the restaurant down or you gotta. So we tried to provide, you know, like meals and certain things. Working around the situation. So we've kinda hopefully on the back end of that and things are starting to get normal again. So when I say we have full service restaurants, there might be some still in California and some places that are, that are on the down low a little bit, but there's.
You don't want one of my guys to pull in there and don't have no restaurant. He called me.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. We wanna make sure.
Understand that.
Yes, sir.
You know, I used to drive and, and I, I did a lot of toy recovery, you know? But TA, I always liked the Iron Skillet.
Yes, sir.
You know, I just kinda like the name of that and, um, and then Petro's of course. But to hear you say how important a driver is and being in a position you're in, that warms my heart. Because I consider myself as just a driver advocate. I'm just, I'm about the driver because that's what I was told to do. By my boss, was to take care of the driver. And I take things seriously. And I take him. I talk to him day in and day out. And anytime that I can get on this show and tell him, hey. Check out that program he got. I talked to the guy. I met him. It makes it easier for me when, when they come to me. I can say, I, I know. If they do have a problem, I can say, I know somebody up there. We gonna call and see what happened.
Absolutely.
And I can tell you the type of person that would take the call and, and would check it out. Sometimes people don't have someone that they can go to.
Sure.
Everybody's not connected with, with, with law like maybe some of us are. And sometimes you need a person that you can go to and just tell. You know, I, I've talked to drivers before and, and I, I, I've been there calling them, but I've talked to them for twenty or thirty minutes. And I said, well, I'm gonna talk to you this way. No, don't call. That's okay. And I, I mean, thank you. But and then I realized along in the job that this guy just wanted to tell somebody this. He don't wanna cause the confusion, but just look at this. So I got why I just kinda looked at it and I wouldn't do it. Because you can't tell nobody don't tell somebody something. They tell them, if I go and tell the driver, the dispatcher don't tell the driver, it's still the crew. So I don't say nothing, but I watch and, and, and sometimes the guys are, are really excited about that. I was telling Miss Kathy here, you know, being in the recycling business, anytime they get on me about popping them glasses. Anytime that you can do something that helps the country. And helps you provide for your family, you're in a good position. Did you just hear what she said? She said she got thirty job openings.
Yeah, and another thing I forgot to mention too is that, um, to be employed, you have to be eighteen years of age. You have to pass a pre-employment, um, screening, drug screening and physical. And also have a valid license.
A valid license. That's, 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 that's not a bad requirement.
Yeah.
That's not a bad requirement at all. We do the same thing with drivers, uh, well, of course, you know, they gotta have a CD, but they do have to pass a drug test and. You know, a lot of people go around that question. They are like, hmm, but you know, one thing about truck talk with Wiley Sanders Truck Lines. We just tell it like this. If you don't pass the drug test, we're not gonna hire you.
Exactly.
There's no sugarcoating to it. That's just the way it is. But you know what? If we, yeah, if we do hire you, you have a chance to make a great living.
You have a chance to make a great living. You can go as far as you want. You have to be driven. Um, we want career minded people.
Wow. And that's what I, you know, I just used that word this morning. What did I tell the guy? I said, I'm not hiring you as a truck driver, but I'm hiring you as making a career in driving. I just used that this morning. And here you come and put the stamp and seal on it. Let me ask you this. The plastic plants and all, they're, they're, they're just booming and, and, and. Nobody, do you agree with me when I say this? Between all the restaurants in Troy, the New Shop or something that came up, the DC and Brundes. I went to the Waffle House this morning and it had a sign up. It said, help, wanted higher immediately. No, I mean, no one in Pike County is able to work. Now, I'm not picking on people that's not able to work. But I'm saying every willing, able body in Pike County could have a job.
Could have a job. There are plenty out there and we have plenty.
Now, I said that to say this. Don't miss your blessing, ladies and gentlemen. Do you know how many cities cannot say? Montgomery couldn't say that.
Right.
But we're small enough, but big enough that we can work everybody. I like the way that sounded. Small enough, but big enough.
We can work everybody. I wanna work at the lab.
Enough, but big enough. You know, and I like what you said about career motivated. The young lady just asked me, well, how long you been doing truck talk? Well, I couldn't tell her how long I've been doing it, but I can tell her this. I started off hauling trash at Wiley Sanders sweeping the shop floor. And I got paid every week. And I just learned to do things. And then I moved on to the wash rack and hmm, I climbed up in one of them trucks and I saw all them gauges and all them switches and stuff. I said, whoa, I'm worried I drive one of these. And in order to get to pull the truck out of the wash rack, you had to be through with your side of it. Being tall kinda helped me. Boy, I'm running that stick. Mister Willie Kelly was my supervisor. I asked Mister Willie, let me pull the trucks to the red line. And he did a psychology game on me, but I was fine because it helped me. He said, well, if you get your side washed first. I said, I ain't worrying about that. I washed my side. Boy, then I found out that that was showing up a good deal in the summertime because we leave the truck running. When I get my side washed, I could get inside. Yeah, I could just run the truck. Mister Kelly would get on the other side. I think I pulled up there about three times and the red line was a good little walk back to the shop. Boy, I walked back because now I got to get up there. I got to get back because I gotta get this other side washed. Cause ain't nobody pulling these trucks out of me. I done made my mind. Ain't, ain't nobody. Well, what it created was, is this guy work. This guy work. He almost running from the red line. But I was running because I wanted to drive the truck and opportunities came up that they start letting me fool with them a little bit. Things came up in the shop and I went in the radio and it just grew from there. It's, you're right. I look back, you know, here I sit here at sixty years old and I'm on a downhill stroke and I'm still having fun. And to, to meet and talk to people like you just excites me and to, and to see our companies just grow. TA Petro come down here to see us today. We special. Drivers, y'all are special. Y'all got the man. I got the man here this morning. Every Wiley Sanders driver, what I want you to do is go by the TA or the Petro and get your fuel today. And tell them, tell them your name. Tell them who they met today.
Mark Fleming.
And he's in Troy, Alabama at your home terminal.
I actually live in Alabaster, so I'm local. I've moved a lot with TA in my thirty-one years. I'm sixty like you since, like, since you throwing that out there.
Yeah.
Uh, so, uh, one of the things I will start doing, I send promos out that we have weekly or monthly. To bed, to the fuel managers, shop managers. I need to include you that.
Yeah, I include you there.
For the, for the promotional items. I like to see them there and if they can take advantage of them, especially the new drivers. I appreciate you inviting me for that, for your orientation. That was, that was very, very, uh, I, I like the way you did that. That was, that was good.
I do that every Monday and, and I try not to be a reader, but being I didn't get your email. I had to look down at my phone. I try to let things come from in here.
Sure.
And every Monday I just think as I'm riding to work, I wanna say something. I'm trying to say something to let those new people know that this is a great place to be. I'm gonna tell you something. I, I, I'm in trucking. I read about it. I look at it. I, I watch it and I know what it takes to make money as a driver. On the business side, but as a driver, I know what it takes to make money and what it takes is to keep the wheels rolling.
Sure.
I can't think of a company and I wouldn't dare call no names because we don't do that on Truck Talk, but I can't think of nobody. That's got a bigger sticker than we got. We got her and her other sister companies.
Yes, sir.
We got this. We got this. We got what's inside of this that we make fertilizer with. And you tell them.
And we recycle.
And we recycle. Recycle keeps this country moving. Like you said about the trucks, I like to say this. You look from your head to your toe, if you got it on, one time or another, it was on a truck.
That's right.
One time or another, it was on a truck. Um, I want you to get me a commercial that y'all are running and we're running on truck.
Okay.
Get with Destin and, uh, and he'll tell you how to, remember what I said. I ain't into the technology part, but.
Right.
He'll, he'll take care of you. He'll tell you all the channels and stuff.
I'll get our marketing group to, uh, put something together.
And let us run it for you guys because I want my guys to be treated special. And I can tell by you taking time to come down here. That you care. That you care about the driver. And, and I like how you put it. You wanna put the driver back on the highway.
Better than he arrived.
Better than he arrived. And that's good. And you know, that, that, um, the preacher, Pastor Harrington, he touched my heart. When he went to praying and he was talking about the conditions on the road and, and give them safety. Man, that touched me. He, that man called me a couple of times and asked me who's gonna be in there. And I'd answer him, who's gonna be in there? And I'm no at all. I don't worry about it. You'll be fine. Just come on, just say a prayer. But he was outlining what he was praying about what he was gonna pray. I saw that this morning. Yeah, I, I, I saw. He was getting confirmation and, and he gave a good confirmation. I'm gonna keep my eye on that class. I keep my eye on all of them, but I'm gonna keep my eye on that class. I tell people, and, and, and this goes back to the drug tested and stuff. If I go to a school, I pride myself, I'm gonna get somebody out of that class. I ain't went yet in there. But I look for high volume and numbers. And young people, you need to hear me when I say this. If I get eight. I'm probably gonna wind up with five. Because if you go into truck driving school, make sure you ain't got them DUIs. Make sure you ain't got a whole bunch of speeding tickets. A speeding ticket over fifteen mile an hour is bad, bad, bad. Make sure you don't have that kinda stuff. And number one, make sure that you can pass the drug test. We've all made mistakes. If you can't, get yourself together that you can.
Right.
And so you can make you some more money. This money is out there to be made. These jobs are here and, and I can go to the Bible with this. Bible says, man, don't work, I'll not eat. And I love to eat. Love to eat. And, uh, if Trace D M don't have, um, you set up for lunch today, but I'm sure they will, but if they don't. Do give me a call and me and Doug will take you to a place.
Oh, well, thank you.
Some good southern food. But you live in Alabaster, so they like you from what.
Other our home offices in West Lake, Ohio, uh, we, we, uh, I've moved around and got back in what I call south of the Mason God's country. I, I, you know. After, after moving seven times with them, but I'm originally from Alabama.
You moved seven times?
With TA in my thirty-one years. Yep.
Oh, they like the army? They just call up and say, we need you here?
Well, the, like you said, there was one thing you said that you can't teach. Sometimes a college education tells me you're capable of learning. But does it tell me you will do the job? Does that make sense?
It makes a lot of sense.
You know, like, I see you can learn, but we do the job. A lot of times we promote them within. So the opportunities was, was there for me to do things, although I started at the TA in Tuscaloosa, Alabama. As a, as a assistant fuel shop manager way back when.
Okay.
When that one opened up. So I was blessed in my career to have opportunities. They never say you have to move here, but if you want this opportunity here.
Here it is.
Here it is. So going back to what you were saying. So, good stuff.
You know, opportunities are just what we make out of them. They're opportunities, but then we gotta make something out of them. Um, I look for big things out of Kathy. Alan gave us some ideas and I can see her wheels are turning, you know, and it's advertising. Business, you know it yourself. You got twenty other truck tops stops that are competing against you.
Oh, yeah.
And you gotta be, put yourself in a position that you're the one. You heard me this morning when I said about being vested and I used a state. Cause everybody when I was growing, I wanted a state job. I want me a state job. Well, it took you ten years to be. Well, it took you ten years to be vested in the state. You come to Wiley Sanders, you vested, they want. Now, one of the key things I love to talk about, where in this country that you can go to school? And I think the highest school I know is five thousand dollars. That's the highest one I know. A lot of them you can go to for three thousand dollars. Six to four weeks, step out the door of that classroom, step into this baby hymn and start off making forty to fifty thousand dollars a year. I'm waiting on answers. I don't hear one. It reminds me. I'm gonna tell you what that question reminded me. We was in Zoom the other day in the Bible study and the guy was talking and he said, now, I'm gonna give y'all a chance to raise your hand. You know, you hit a little button, raise your hand. He said, I'm gonna ask the question, just the easy question. And everybody can, and I know everybody was just like me, boy, I done got up so I could get to my button, you know? He said, okay, and it's simple. He said, I want everybody to answer now and I'm gonna take time and listen to everybody answer. Don't get it on her. He said, how many people in here have never made a mistake, never did nothing wrong, never thought about doing that wrong? And he just got silent and you didn't see no hand code. Quite naturally, I put my hands in my pocket so I didn't accidentally. I said that to say this. We've all made mistakes, but opportunities are here to correct them. We've given some second chances at Wiley Sanders, but it's been a good for us. I got some guys and some ladies that I give a chance to have done good, have done good. So, don't think because you've had a little problem or something has happened that you're just done for. You're not. You're not done for until you give up.
Right. We are all about second chances. Yeah, we have a lot of employees that has second, third, fourth, fifth chances.
Yeah.
And, you know, a mistake is a mistake and that doesn't stop life.
It doesn't stop.
It doesn't stop.
Absolutely. I know we've all, even myself, I go back to things at twenty in college and some of the things I go, well, what was I thinking back in those days?
Really? What was we thinking? What was, what was on our mind? But y'all, we're in a position, all three of us are in a position to help people. You help them. Guy comes in there, nice clean shower, nothing is no better. Nothing is no better. Good fuel. You know, you know, you can buy bad fuel out there. You know that. You can buy bad fuel, but you guys, y'all, by the, y'all had the best. Good fuel. Kathy can put them in the recycling business. You know what I like about it? She tells me that a guy that's general labor, they'll teach him to do other things. Come there, show that you're willing to work. First thing you got to do, you got to show up.
Got to show up. You got to show up on time.
You got to show up on time and that's what they call decent in an oil. That's not too much to ask. Because at the end of the week, I've been working for Sanders all my life. All my life, I remember Wiley Sanders Truck Lines. I've got some of bitches on my own, got some now. But never has a pride to roll around and I ain't got much. I tell them now, you know, we got this automatic thing they put to the bank, you know? I used to go in the gym, I'd tell the guys, oh, boy, my back hurt. My, so much back. So, they slid it in there last night. Looked like they hit it a little hard. It kind of bucked me a little bit. It's a joy in working and knowing you're gonna get paid and knowing you're gonna get decent wages. We pay decent wages. We pay great wages and our drivers make good money. Our trainees, let me tell you something. You see the trainees coming in there? We pay them about a mile, every mile that truck run. And they take home some good chicks. I got a book that I'll show you today sometime to get back by my office that just shows what these trainees make. We go, yo and behold, to make sure they're comfortable. Because in my business, this trainee, it's gonna be a driver if I stay with him through his. I look at some night, it didn't, nothing. I was telling a lady this the other day. This little girl, she was from Dothan, Alabama. I'll never forget it. When I said little, she looked like a little girl. And I went down there to the school of speed and she called my hand after class. She told me, she said, because I tell them, we're lady friendly. She said, you're lady friendly? And I said, yeah. I thought she was somebody's daughter, you know? And I said, yeah, you, you got somebody want to drive? And she said, yeah, me. Well, I said, okay, you know, fill out the application. Well, she filled out, she came. She said, I graduate next week. I'll be there. And she came. And when she come through the office, keep the mask. I'm gonna call him out. He said, who your child is that you got? She looks just that little, you know? We was kind of worried about it. We pulled her with Miss Shirley Little. And if Miss Shirley can't train, you can't be trained. She got it. She went out on her first trip and she made it. And every time I see her come through the gate, I think I was a part of that, you know? Because I stayed with her, you know, because she told me she could and she did. And every time that happens to me, every time I get one out of a school and I have to do something special, maybe get their seat changed or or just help them in a way to get them going and encourage them. It makes me feel good when they whoop through that gate the first time on a truck by themselves. You there then. I tell people all the time, orientation and training is just for a little while. The gravy is on the back end. You eating the legs right now, but when you get up on that end, you gonna get up there in the breast part. You gonna get the chicken, the breast part of the chicken. And that's what you're doing.
Yeah, and with, and with your speaking of the schooling, I will be doing some job fairs starting tomorrow with, for high school. High school seniors, we're going to be doing some recruiting for them in Dothan. Start when you fall tomorrow, Dothan, Op, Enterprise, Greenville and all over from starting this month up until the first week of May. And then after that, I will be sponsoring some of our own one band, one man show type of recruiting where I would get just wherever, wherever I can go.
Okay. There you go. That's, you know, that's probably good for a high school student. Everybody's not college material.
Right.
My hand. Let me raise it. Destin back there, he got his hand ready, but you see he working all his equipment. So, everybody's not college material, so I'm glad to hear that you going there.
Right.
And that's good. That's, that's good. I think that if we just stay on the path we own, just keep beating, just keep beating. You keep keeping that truck stop nice and clean and keep giving those guys those discounts and those rewards and you just keep asking. You just keep asking. You just keep knocking and I got you. I got you. Anything I can do to help you, I'm willing to help you, but I can't say enough for LB PB House. Got you three minutes. He talking to me now, but he ain't got no college education, but he got, he's smart enough to tell me, get off the TV. LB PB House give me that. And he knew I needed something. And I got a paint bucket, but I carried it to a school with me. But we make paint buckets right here in Troy. Right here in Troy.
Right. KW Container.
KW Container.
Yeah.
Now, exciting that is. When I go to a school, man, I got a big old box. I go up in there. I lay all my stuff out and I just go to pick it. I'm gonna tell you what I got. We got so much stuff and this is the truth. We got the lead. We got the plastic. We got the paint buckets. We got fertilizer. I had so much stuff till I caught people like this. Yeah, sure. Yeah, I know you do. Yeah, I know you do. And I started giving tools. I started bringing them and letting them see. Nothing like to be a driver. I tell young drivers, you ain't seen nothing till you go to a big truck stop and you see all these things you can buy. You know it. You probably helped get it in there. You ain't seen nothing. Well, you ain't seen nothing till you come to Wiley Sanders Truck Lines and see what we got. You got to see it to believe it. But it's true. But it ain't nothing like when you let it out. You heard what I told them guys there when I take you around Thursday, you gonna say wow?
Yeah, yeah. That was very interesting.
You gonna say wow. Like I look golf cart and I take them around on Thursdays and they be like, everybody wants to know that they're the place that's gonna stand. Nothing against mom and pop things, but I want me something solid. I don't at school, I don't spend my money for this CDL. I want to make money. I want to go somewhere where they, what them young folks say, where they jumping.
Like your motto, you set people up for success rather than failure.
Some of us are for success. For success. Some of us are for success.
From a master text, so you encourage that for me.
And the training is not beautiful. Beautiful. It's just there. You gotta do it. You got it now? Everybody got it. You got all your behind the scenes action? Okay. Until next week, this has been Truck Talk with Wiley Sanders Truck Lines. We thank all the Wiley Sanders drivers for the things you do. Remember, this is about you, not me. Goodbye.